Okay, next is our 9:15 item, Public Hearing, Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps Presented by CAL FIRE. And you can come up and join us here. You can come up here.
Is it there?
Yeah.
Nothing I understand, but good morning. My name is Marshall Turberville, I'm Battalion Chief with CAL FIRE.
Oh, they need you to have the mic. Yeah.
I've got eight mics. About now. So, good morning. My name is Marshall Turberville. I'm Battalion Chief in the Sonoma Lake Nappy Unit, which covers Lake County. I'm here to talk about the fire hazard severity zone. And what we're doing is a public hearing as part of a government process at the state level to get public input. So, the county has been very fortunate to work with us. We feel very fortunate and hold this public hearing as part of a Board of Supervisors meeting. So, we're not asking for any action from the Board of Supervisors or county staff. This is strictly a state process to get public comment, official public comment, on the proposed new fire hazard severity zone maps. And that's printed on the back table back there laying down. There was in the board agenda packet a couple forms and things that we're assuming everybody, CAL FIRE is assuming that you're prepared to comment on. So, I'm not going to give a description of the proposed changes, a description of what the maps are intended to be used for. It's, we're making the assumption you're ready to give a public comment. So, it's three-minute limited public, or three-minute time public comment. We'll have you come up to the podium here and I'll put the microphone, CAL FIRE is recording this as well as I believe the county is, to get your guys' comment on the proposed changes. So, you can comment on the regulation, comment on the map, the map changes, and then once we close the formal hearing, I can do a little bit of question and answers with the board and with members of the public, or we can take it out into the lobby and talk further. So, does that make sense? This is a state process required by law to be held in each of the counties that has state responsibility area. So, 58 counties in the state, 56 have state responsibility area. The last time the maps were updated was 2008, so this is the 2022 revision. Today's purpose is to get verbal, oral, in-person comments on the record, but you have until February 3rd, next Friday, to do written, hand-delivered, or emailed comments. And on one of the forums, which is, I think of all the forums, probably the best forum, it's two-sided here. At the bottom of it, it talks about comments versus questions. You can ask questions all the time. Your questions are going to get responded to in real time. So, if you have a question about the map, the model, the data, the regulation, the government process, how this is being done, you can submit a question via email and it will get answered right away. If you submit a comment, a comment's different than a question. If you submit a comment, that's going to get held on to and through the Office of Administrative Law, that's a state entity, AOL or OAL, OAL. When they go through the official adoption, which will happen sometime in February, after February 3rd, after public comment is closed, that's when you will get a, could get a response. It'll be part of the regulatory process on any comments. So, that's some confusion about questions versus comments. We're not here as part of a process to answer questions today. This is a comment period. So, just like the county would do a comment period, this is a state doing a comment period. So, with that being said, I'll become more or less like a robot. I'm going to read a script, we're going to show a video, and then we'll open it up for a public comment. One bad thing, because we need to be consistent across all the counties we're holding these public hearings in, we're not going to be able to accept comments via Zoom or someone that's not here in person. Okay? That is not, that's not something CAL FIRE has afforded other counties to do. So, the folks that are on Zoom listening online, you can either try to attend another hearing in person in another county, there's about eight of them left after today. You don't have to be from Lake County either to comment as well. You can be from a neighboring county, anywhere in the state and comment as well today. So, no online comments, but just remember your opportunity then is to submit in-person, mail, or email. And that information's here, and I can go over it again. It's also in the agenda packet. Okay? I'll just pause for one, a couple moments here. I can maybe answer a question about the process, but I can't answer a question about any maps or the regulatory. So, is everyone comfortable or understand what we're going to be doing as far as the public hearing? I'm going to read a script, show a video, have folks come up to the podium here, give your public comment, not a question, your public comment, and then we'll have a short little part for question and answer. Make sense? Okay. So, there's the part where I become a robot and read a script. Good day. My name is Marshall Turberville, and I'm a Battalion Chief with CAL FIRE. I call to order this public hearing for the County of Lake at 9:24 a.m. on January 24th, 2023. This public hearing is to receive official comments related to fire hazard severity zones for the County of Lake as required by Public Resources Code Section 4203. This public hearing will be recorded, so please mute your phone. This will ensure that we have a clear recording of the meeting. The Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, is mandated by Public Resources Code Section 4201 through 4204 to identify fire hazard severity zones in state responsibility area. These are areas of significant fire hazard based on fuels, terrain, weather, and other relevant factors. Within state responsibility area, CAL FIRE has mapped three hazard zones, moderate, high, and very high. Statutes arose out of legislation following large catastrophic wildfires to reduce damage from wildfires. CAL FIRE is revising fire hazard severity zone state responsibility area maps that identify wildfire hazard in areas for which the state has financial responsibility for wildland fire protection. Later in 2023, recommendations will be made for fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility area, areas where local government has financial responsibility for wildland fire protection. Local governments will conduct public hearings and adopt local ordinances based on future recommendations from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. The model used to develop the fire hazard severity zone maps focuses on hazard alone, which takes into account the probability of the area burning and potential fire behavior in the area based on elements such as fire history, potential fuel over a 30- to 50-year period, blowing embers, terrain, weather, and the likelihood of structures igniting. It is not an evaluation of the level of risk that the area faces because it does not consider modifications such as defensible space, building construction, or water supply. I will now show a short video explaining how fire hazard severity zones were determined. This is the video I believe we provided. If it can be shown, it's roughly a five-and-a-half-minute video.
Hello, I'm Jamie. I'm a member of the CAL FIRE modeling team that developed the fire hazard severity zone map for California. Fire hazard severity zone maps are built to describe relative wildland and urban interface fire hazard potential over the long term for all areas of the state. The zones reflect areas that have similar burn probabilities and fire behavior characteristics and are split into three classes, moderate, high, and very high. To explain the methods used in building fire hazard severity zones, we will show the sequence of steps and some key data inputs zooming in on the north-central part of Butte County near the cities of Chico and Paradise as an example. The same steps were used statewide. Different steps were taken for modeling fire hazard severity zones in wildland areas and non-wildland areas. Wildland areas include places such as forests, grasslands, and shrublands where the land cover is dominated by vegetation. In these areas, we can apply well-established scientific methods to model fire behavior such as spread and intensity. The potential fire behavior is combined with the likelihood of fire to get an estimate of the hazard. Non-wildland areas include urban, agricultural, and barren lands, and water or wetlands. In these areas, hazard arises due to embers coming in from adjacent wildlands and associated fire spread through urban vegetation and structures. We estimate hazard in non-wildland based on the number of embers, where those embers are likely to land based on local wind patterns and the slope and tree cover within the area, which can increase the chance of fire ignition and spread. The first step in building fire hazard severity zone maps is to define the zones, areas of the map where fire hazard severity zone scores are determined and a classification is calculated. The zones aim to capture patches of similar fire behavior potential or fire environments. Fire hazard severity zone classes are ultimately applied across an entire zone. The data inputs for developing the zone boundaries include slope and vegetation. Areas that have similar slope and flammability are aggregated or grouped into zones. There is no maximum zone size, but there is a minimum size of 200 acres for continuous wildlands and smaller for islands of wildlands surrounded by urban and agricultural lands. The fire hazard severity model for wildland fire has two key elements, probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather conditions. The probability of an area burning was calculated using fire history for the years 1991 to 2020. Knowing how much area burned within broadly similar areas of vegetation and climate allows us to calculate the annual likelihood of a fire occurring in that area. We then estimate the potential flame length if fire were to occur based on vegetation type, slope, and the local climate. Vegetation type and climate allow us to understand how much fuel may be present and how dry or available to burn it may be. Because fire hazard severity zones are intended to measure the potential hazard across multiple decades, we use a long-term look at fuel development and do not adjust our data inputs to account for recent fires or fuel management activities. We want to know what a fire could be like under the worst fuel conditions that may occur in an area. Similarly, for climate data, we use the worst 5% of fire weather observations that occurred on days when the weather is dry enough to carry fire. This allows us to capture areas that have infrequent but regular occurrences of hot, dry, and windy conditions and include that in our estimate of hazard. We then combine the probability of fire with the potential flame length to get a final score for hazard in wildland areas. All the scores within a zone are averaged to get a final value for that zone, and the zones are summarized into final classes of moderate, high, or very high. The first step in estimating hazard in non-wildlands is to model ember transport out of adjacent wildlands. Remember that non-wildlands include urban, agricultural, and barren lands, and water or wetlands, and that the hazard in these areas comes from adjacent wildland. To model embers falling onto these lands, we must consider how many may be produced and where they are likely to land in the event of a wildfire. The number of embers, also known as firebrands, produced in the wildland is a function of vegetation type, modeled flame length, and burn probability. We model the dispersal of embers into non-wildland areas under the worst local fire weather conditions when fires are more likely to challenge containment efforts. For example, if the worst fire weather at a given location tends to have winds predominantly out of the northeast at 40 miles per hour, modeled firebrands go predominantly to the southwest and go a greater maximum distance than they would at a site with predominantly 20 mile-per-hour winds. We then add up all the embers coming into the non-wildland to get an estimate of the relative number or brand load landing in a given location. We build fire hazard severity zones in non-wildland areas by generating buffers off any adjacent wildland. The initial zone classification is the same as the adjacent wildland with buffers of lower fire hazard severity zone classes modeled at further distances from the wildland boundary. In addition to brand load, we include slope and tree cover in generating fire hazard severity zone buffers as these factors can promote greater fire ignition and spread. The width of the fire hazard severity zone buffer is wider in areas that have higher brand load, steeper slope, and greater tree cover. In non-wildland, areas that are sufficiently far from hazardous wildlands can remain unzoned in contrast to wildland areas which always receive a zone designation. This completes the modeling process for fire hazard severity zones across all lands in the state. Once we have a final fire hazard severity zone map for all lands, the final step in map development is to extract state responsibility areas to fulfill the requirements of the regulatory process. If you have further questions on the zoning methods, please visit the fire hazard severity zone website for more information on the model and the project in general.
The existing fire hazard severity zones state responsibility maps were last approved in the late 2000s. Following these current county public hearings, the Office of the State Fire Marshal may elect to amend the maps or adopt them without revision. There are separate fire hazard severity zone maps for state responsibility area and local responsibility area. Each requires a different adoption process. The adoption process includes public hearings in the 56 counties that have state responsibility area. These public hearings are being conducted during a 45-day period from December 16th, 2022 through February 3rd, 2023. If people wishing to make public comments are unable to attend a public hearing, comments may still be received during the entire 45-day period. The state responsibility area maps have been reviewed statewide by the 21 CAL FIRE units and six contract counties. Recommendations for changes have been provided. The recommendations have been reviewed by CAL FIRE Sacramento staff. The fire hazard severity zone state responsibility area maps are now available for review and to allow written comments as part of this regulatory public hearing process. Today, you will have the opportunity to provide written or verbal comments. Please understand that this public hearing is not designed to be a public forum or discussion. This hearing is only to receive comments as required in Public Resources Code Section 4203. Questions versus comments. Please understand at this public hearing, questions you may have are legally different from comments. All public comments received today will be transmitted to the Office of the State Fire Marshal and will be evaluated at a future date. If you have questions needing immediate answers, a full suite of resources are available to help answer those questions, such as historic background, scientific, regulatory, and implementation questions. Available at this public hearing are contact avenues for web-based and telephonic resources for any questions you may have regarding fire hazard severity zones. The Administrative Procedures Act requires a minimum 45-day period for the public to comment to the Office of the State Fire Marshal in writing on the proposed regulation. The notice of proposed rulemaking action specifies the rulemaking agency name, contact person, and address where the comments must be directed, and the date the written comment period closes. Additionally, Public Resources Code requires that the Office of the State Fire Marshal not adopt a fire hazard severity zone unless the proposed regulation has been transmitted to the Board of Supervisors of each county where a zone is located at least 45 days prior to the adoption of the regulation, and that a public hearing has been held in that county during that 45-day period. Under the Administrative Procedures Act, at a public hearing, both written and oral comments must be accepted. All comments will be collected, summarized, and responded to in the final regulatory submission to the Office of Administrative Law. The only public comments considered by the Office of the State Fire Marshal are those submitted during the comment period or at this or subsequent hearings. Each speaker will have approximately three minutes to state their comments. Please queue up near the podium to provide comments. In order to accurately record your comment, please fill out and submit your comments on our comment cards. When speaking, please introduce yourself, the county and city in which you reside in, and your comment. I will now take the first commenter. I'll keep track of time up here. Probably county staff is doing the same.
My name is Randy Murphy. I'm the General Manager for Hidden Valley Lake here in Lake County. Thank you for the presentation. You did answer a couple of my questions, a couple of comments that I have for consideration, and hopefully another look at the area immediately surrounding Hidden Valley Lake in particular. Hidden Valley Lake spends over $1 million a year in fire mitigation efforts. The latest map does not, appears not to have made that in consideration, and your comments or the video makes that clear that you don't look at defensible space and things like that. So, I at least understand why. I see and/or receive many comments every month about people getting non-renewed on their homeowner's insurance. I fear that this map not reflecting improvements made specifically in Hidden Valley Lake area will not help that. So, South County Fire Chief Mike Wink has commented on numerous occasions that our area is a model for the entire state. So, I would like, our brush score recently by one of the insurance agencies that do this kind of thing reduced our brush score from 88 out of a max of 100 to 43. That again is not apparent reflected in the current, or the suggested map. So, my comment is, again, strongly encourage another look specifically at the Hidden Valley Lake area to help our residents stop getting all those non-renewals. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Andre, and I represent the Conocti Fire Safe Council in Kelseyville, as well as Riviera Heights Homeowners Association in Kelseyville. The, we understand that CAL FIRE is required by law to develop the hazard severity maps and only evaluate fire hazard, but the major negative impact of this report on all of our communities is exactly what the gentleman that was just here said also. There you are. This, this map is being used by the California insurance companies as a parent on the California Commissioner's website, and it is used by the California Insurance Commissioner's Office to assess fire risk, not fire hazard. This has drastic consequences for homeowners who live in high and very high fire hazard zones. Use of the hazard maps by insurance companies will cause hazard insurance premiums to escalate. Many hazard insurance policies will likely be canceled or not renewed. Homeowners will need to consider increasing their deductible amounts and reduce home replacement costs to rebuild their homes in the event of wildfire. They will not be able to afford to rebuild homes in this area with the escalation of insurance costs. Their only hazard insurance alternative is California Fair Plan, which I like to call the California Unfair Plan. It offers bare-bones insurance for a exorbitant, absolutely exorbitant premium cost. And again, these insurance companies are using the CAL FIRE hazard maps as criteria for how they are assessing homeowners in Lake County. High fire hazard ratings and skyrocketing insurance premiums are competing to deter homeowners from doing mitigation work on their properties. We have, as a Fire Safe Council and as, there are four homeowner associations, there's 23 firewise councils in Lake County, there's three Fire Safe Councils. I mean, we have a tremendous amount of mitigation effort and mitigation work going on right now, none of which is reflected in the CAL FIRE hazard maps. And we believe very strongly that with the new technology that CAL FIRE has at their fingertips and was used in drilling down on these property maps, on the hazard maps, that that same technology should be used with providing algorithms or map layering that reflect the mitigation work that has been done by these, by these, sorry, by all of our homeowners associations, our communities, our individual homeowners.
Hit the three minutes.
I know, and I appreciate it. The only thing that any of us can change on here is fuel load. That is not, the fuel load that we have changed is not reflected anywhere in the maps, and we ask CAL FIRE to reconsider that and put those, put that information into the maps for a more fair assessment of the areas. Thank you very much.
Morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Grudy. I am the President of the Buckingham Homeowners Association in Lake County and a Board Member of the Conocti Fire Safe Council. I would like to address the creation of the new fire hazard severity zone map from the perspective of the Buckingham community. In the new map, the entire Buckingham Peninsula is now in the very high category compared with the last map, when only half of the Buckingham Peninsula was categorized in that way. That is a very significant change. But I'm not here to argue about the data, but to say that however well-intentioned this map may be, we believe that it could very well undermine our efforts to reduce wildfire risk and could in fact inflict significant financial harm on the residents of Buckingham. We understand that the map is not designed to be used by insurance companies when they make underwriting decisions, but nonetheless, that is what is happening. In the past, some decisions that we have monitored based on the last map have gone in favor of property owners and others have not. But with the entire peninsula now in the very high category, we believe that most of the decisions going forward will be adverse decisions. We tell our property owners about the benefits of weed clearing, of taking down their dead trees, and home hardening, but when they see that their efforts are not being recognized, it makes our job of building a community consensus around fire safety even more difficult. Our average property owner sees their fire hazard designation going from unzoned or moderate to very high at a time when it appears that all the work they've been doing, the efforts to become a firewise community are leading things to go in the absolutely opposite direction. By and large, the property owners that we deal with do not make a distinction between a hazard assessment and a risk assessment, especially when they see that the map being used by their insurance companies is in fact often a hazard assessment map. In short, the optics are terrible. Again, we see that their efforts are going up, the efforts of our residents are going up, while the results appear to be going down. On behalf of the Buckingham Homeowners Association, I call on you to take steps that will make it clear to the insurance industry in a very forceful way that this map is not intended for use as a sole source of denying coverage.
Good morning. John Knoll, retired Battalion Chief, Board of Directors of the Conocti Fire Safe Council and the Riviera Heights Firewise Community. Here to share with you an example of just how your maps do impact insurance rates. My wife and I live in an area that on your current map shows as only a moderate hazard zone. So, after spending several years on the California Unfair Plan and getting our most recent update that our California Fair Plan was going to $7,500, and then you add on top of that the wraparound that you're required to have, we're at $9,000 for the upcoming year, at which time I took your current map to a local insurance agency, and they agreed based on the efforts that we had been made and the CAL FIRE mapping, and they gave us insurance which is now one-third of what we've been paying historically under the California Fair Plan. Here's your proposed map with our property in the middle of it, just as Bill was indicating for Buckingham and everyone else. We've arbitrarily been placed in the highest hazard zone in spite of the fact that we still maintain a tremendous amount of vacant land and an orchard, and orchards and vineyards are not included. We would suggest to you, and I'm sure you're hearing this same message over and over again, what an incredible opportunity CAL FIRE has here to take the lead and add one more algorithm to your mapping process, and that algorithm would be recognition of firewise groups, recognizing that here in the state of California, we have now over 500 firewise communities, all required to make, to accomplish and maintain all the hazardous fuels reduction and home hardening that is exactly listed on your website where these same maps exist. So, we would encourage you, add that to your mapping process. You have an incredibly robust folks, group of folks available now to accomplish that within your organization and also with the folks that you have up and down the state that are identified and we utilize as our liaison officers through CAL FIRE to the firewise community at the NFPA. So, again, we would encourage you, please take advantage of this opportunity, set the standard, and lead the way for hazard mitigation and home hardening in the state. The moment you add that algorithm to your mapping, the increase in folks that will want to participate to participate in home hardening and fuels reduction and defensible space and maybe even survivable space will increase dramatically. So please add that one algorithm to it. And we know that it works because we know that the fire insurance companies themselves recently sent out a letter that indicates that by home hardening, you increase your survivability by forty percent, and by both home hardening and hazard reduction, which is all three zones on zero, zone one, and zone two, you increase your survivability by more than seventy-five percent within the hazard zone. So again, we would encourage you, add that algorithm, give us the benefit of it out, give us, throw us a bone that when we go out and we try to encourage more folks to become involved and become certified firewise communities, that there's going to be some benefit to the tremendous amounts of money that we're spending. Hidden Valley, and like you say, firewise group spends a million, the rest of us throughout the county spend at least that much also. Add one more algorithm. Thank you.
How are all you today? My name is Robert Gary. I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for the Habemetal Pum of Upper Lake. I'm also the director of cultural resources. One of the concerns I think that come to mind and not really looking at as far as the draft process and the protocols for it is the buffer zone. Lake County itself is a high sensitive cultural resource area just due to the habitation of the indigenous communities that have been here. I guess the question that I have is to find out like what the method is, I think, for those buffer zones, how are those created? And then also the inclusion, I guess my comment is making sure that there's the inclusion of the tribal communities that are here for the protection of those cultural resources that are in their affiliated areas, to ensure that it's a part of the process, to make sure that, you know, tribes are being consulted with. I think when those buffer zones are being constructed, I've been on projects and, you know, for Habemetal, you know, the complex fires in the backyard. And so making sure the protection of those cultural resources for the tribal communities, and I think it's making also to ensure inclusion with the tribal communities about their resources and their areas. And any map creation should definitely take into consideration the sensitivity of cultural resources from those communities. So I guess my comment is to make sure that there's an inclusion for tribal communities when those maps are created. Also keep in mind that information that is given as far as for the protection of those tribal cultural resources, those are confidential. So not too sure about, you know, the sharing of maps, but just to ensure that if there is an area that we are looked at at a high level or a high rate, you know, for fires, what's the method to be able to do that and to make sure that the protection of those cultural resources are a part of the process? So I just haven't received anything from CAL FIRE as far as for the creation of maps. Definitely something I know that we can be a part of. We have at Habemetal our own GIS analyst in our own mapping system. So if there's any help that we can do to ensure that any time that something happens, that that's actually a part of, you know, what we're trying to protect as well. Thank you.
No one else from the audience is planning to make a comment. I'll turn it to the board if you'd like to make a comment. I'd like you to keep to three minutes, but it's also your meeting.
Go ahead.
Couple comments, supervisor Green. Oh, double mic. I like that.
We'll restart your time there, too.
Will you? Timer for soups. Thank you for bringing this forward, and the comments so far have been interesting. One comment for accessibility, it took a little bit of a deep dive into the flyers and stuff like that to actually find the maps you're talking about. So just for people tuning in, if you follow the links deep enough, you'll get to a GIS type of thing, and the actual link is calfire-forestry.maps arcgis.com. Calfire-forestry.maps arcgis.com, and it'll pop up what you see typically in these GIS maps, interactive stuff. So that's pretty impressive if you can get there, but you may have to deep dive into the materials presented so far. Some of the people that's spoken before did a before and after, so this particular online version of the proposed maps, if it had an overlay of the previous map, so people could do a ready comparison of before and after, I think would be super handy. Apparently, people have found a way to do it using the existing tools, but that's kind of something that could have been added as a layer fairly easy here, just to make it simpler for people to access. I am puzzled by a couple of the designations here, but that's more of a question than a comment. When I was on the city council in Lakeport, these maps came up front and center as we were considering a housing subdivision in one of our parklands there that is directly abutted by very high-risk areas. And then the question at that time, and the question I'm still going to have here sitting in this seat, is this is a very extensive fire hazard map that basically shows the entire county in a very high-risk area, and at the time, local agencies are making land use approvals for building projects, for example, that's apparently more of a fire risk question than it is a fire hazard question. And so on the one hand, these maps are supposed to be used and relied upon in great detail as the board of supervisors or a city council within the county of Lake considers whether a particular building project can be safely done or not, and what mitigations might be needed to harden that development out the gate. And so the use of these tools for planning is, it's kind of problematic in my mind. I can't fully rely on this map to decide what happens in the city of Lakeport, for example, in a housing subdivision. I'd be hard-pressed to figure out how we would apply these maps for future housing developments in the unincorporated county. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to have more follow-up questions, probably offline on this moving ahead, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you for bringing this here. My comments are meant to be more towards the people who have created this process, so appreciate the individuals in the room. Please know that the comments are not meant to be personalized to you. My colleague mentioned that the map, you have to do a little bit of a deep dive. For this being public comment, it should not be a find-the-map game. It should be very easy to click on one attachment and see what does Lake County look like yesterday on the map, and what does it look like as proposed? I think that's not a good way to approach the public. We need to provide everything upfront, not ask people to do a little bit more work to get to what we're asking and talking about. Overall, I get it. We've seen a lot of fires, so I understand why the map is moving in that direction, but the direction we're going is only going to hurt the rural areas, Lake County definitely, but the rest of rural California. The belief is we are dealing with climate change, which I am going to say rural California has not been the major contributor of, but we are the major recipient of the rules and regulations that will limit us in what we're going to be able to do. We have not created a concrete jungle everywhere, therefore, development is still going to have to go through the process of how fire safe is it? This map, led by other efforts such as SB fifty that says no building of any kinds in high-fire-threat areas, will eventually eliminate any prospect of economic movement and progress here in Lake County. So I'm very nervous about what this map means. Insurance-wise, I see that the commissioner says that insurance companies are supposed to give us a reduction in home hardening and other things to be fire safe. That doesn't mention any decreases or any caps on insurance. It just means if you have ten to twenty thousand dollars to spend, they'll decrease it a little bit, and I'd like you to look around in our community and see how many people can afford to do those things to the properties they own. So the benefit from the insurance commissioner, I don't see that as being a huge benefit. Here, it will be very limited in those that can access those services and those decreases. I think this is definitely a slap in the face to all of the efforts being made to mitigate fires. We have lived through fires, and we are doing everything that we can to try to limit and mitigate future fires, yet not having that as part of the algorithm as stated by some of the public comment we've already received, it's demoralizing. It's a large effort, yet that effort is not found. And I understand, because you said two thousand eight or something like that was the last time it was updated, there's been no mention anywhere on when we expect to see this updated again. If it takes ten, twenty years, yeah, defensible space needs to be defensible space every year, every other year, whatever it is that you're actually taking down and making defensible space for. So over the course of ten years, you can't see what it is today and estimate that it's going to be there in two or three years. So I ask, do this more often and use defensible space so we can prove that we are doing our part that you are asking us to do. We all want to win from this. I think I will stop there, but this, I'm also going to make a comment right now. Please don't change this. Cities are exempt from the SRA. They are their own protection zones. I see this leading to a lot of cities being annexed and created in order to get out of this very disconnected creation that puts county unincorporated land in a very awkward situation of where people will no longer be able to live in because the rules that are set by this. And that is not a good idea. Economically and politically, that is not good, but at the same time, there are consequences for things that occur, and this could be one of the consequences from continuing to move forward with this map by not looking at the efforts that are being made. So, thank you.
Right here. Oh, he got it.
I do have one final comment, actually, and I hope that we can bring this back to the board so that we can provide a letter, a combined letter from the board on our comments, not as individuals, but as a board on our thoughts on this, and maybe even open it up to a broader conversation with the public as well, because I think a letter from the board would, by the date, February third or whatever it was, I think is an important thing for us to look at.
Folks, I'm District One Supervisor. Yeah, you know, what I really wanted to focus on was the work being done here in Lake County since 2015, obviously. Obviously, we had the Rocker Fire, I think it was in 2014, 2015, right at the beginning. You know, Lake County has made some very large strides as far as moving forward. I just want to talk a little bit, it was talked about earlier about adding the algorithm for firewise communities, fire safe councils, Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. The county has also implemented a vegetation abatement ordinance. I think that really needs to be taken into context here. I think some of the comments that were made by the gentleman stood up from the Conocti Riviera, we've been trying to do the work, and this really is going to set us back in that, you know, engagement from the community. And we've got some great momentum, yes. We've got some challenges to work through, but we've been selected as one of the three counties in the state of California for a home hardening program. It is in the Riviera area at this point, but we plan on that being countywide. We got a small pilot program for ingress and egress to make sure people can get in and out of areas safe. You know, we're just starting to do that work, and some of these things are coming directly from CAL FIRE. So we really need to look at that of the work being done by each individual county, but just what needs to happen as we're moving forward. I am definitely concerned about the insurance implications that this will have in our area. We are all inundated by calls, and how do we figure that out? And the work we're trying to put down on the ground here is to say, listen, if you're moving into Lake County, we have the countywide vegetation abatement ordinance, we have the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, which has all the cities, the tribes, water purveyors, all of our fire districts, everybody working together to make sure that we're continuing along those lines of working at home hardening, vegetation abatement, how we're going to be doing these things to move forward. So I really think, just as was said, adding that algorithm in there for Lake County, I can't speak for the rest of the state, but I imagine you guys are going to get those comments from other areas that have done the great work, like we're trying to do on the boots-on-the-ground here in coordination with our fire department. So I think for me right now, that's kind of my main comment. It really needs to be looked at. And I know our fire districts had a look at it, but, you know, when a computer's making a decision, it just, it just doesn't come out good, as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't take into effect, it just, there's no in-between. How is the work being done? It's just black or white, and it doesn't take into account everything that's happening. I think here in Lake County, we've done a great job. We've got a lot of work to do for the next decade, but this is just going to set us back. And I believe right now, we're having the public hearing, please, I will implore you as a county, you know, as a supervisor, I'm always asked, what can we do? I think our community needs to get their comments in. We need to figure that out, how it's on our website here at the county. We really need to let, you know, the governor and CAL FIRE know that we need to look at this in a different way. And I'm not going to say throw it out, throw it out, but that's almost where I'm at. No. You know, I got to be the one to say it, and I'm going to catch some heat for it, but we've got to do it in a different way. I've seen around the country here on the West Coast, they've tried to implement something like this in Oregon and other places, but, you know, our community members stood up and said, no, we've got to look at it differently. So, you know, I'm going to be the one saying it. We've got to look at this differently, because you can't just say, well, all Lake County's just a, you know, you can't live here. Well, people have been living here for thousands of years. It's how you live in the environment, it's the way you adapt, and it's the way we move forward as a community. And I think Lake County's embraced that to understand where we are and to take advantage of this beautiful area that we live in, but understand that there are consequences if you don't do it right, and we're going to continue to try and build in that manner. So those are my thoughts right now. It is limited. I will say to the community, it is tough when you just come in and you get your three minutes and you say, well, this is it, just comment period, can't ask questions. I know it's frustrating, but you have until February third, correct, to get comments in in written form, and this isn't, towards everybody in the room from CAL FIRE bringing this to us, this is just a conversation we need to have for the entire community. So thank you very much, but those are my comments today. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
It's a double effect, right? Do I?
Yeah, do both.
The second microphone is for Neil Farrow to get it over.
Like a press conference. Yeah, no, my only comment, a lot of it's been stated already, and especially from the public, but there's also one of the things I wanted to highlight, one of the policies that were improved with or amended for RCRC, and the statement basically just says, RCRC, "Support state-funded programs to aid socially vulnerable homeowners with home retrofits and defensible space efforts in order to mitigate individual and community wildfire risk." And they added this sentence, "including mitigation efforts necessary to meet state or federal programs designed to increase insurance affordability and availability." With regards to some of the map, the mapping and whatnot, I don't know if, I know that they'll be working on this with the state in regards to this as well, because we're a member of RCRC, so they'll be coming forward and making comments as well if they haven't already. But I just wanted to highlight that, that that's in those policies, and they're advocating for us in that capacity as well, so.
So my comments are along the lines of my colleagues. This map, and I was able to find the map with the slider that shows the previous map and the current map that's proposed, and maybe we can put that up when we're done with this section of the hearing. But what we're looking at is a snapshot, and it's one piece in, one moment in time of the terrain, of the vegetation, but it doesn't tell the whole story. When we look at the fires that we've had over the past couple of years, they've been smaller, and we can say we've been lucky, but really, it's a combination of strategies from CAL FIRE, from local resources, from communities, and individuals making a difference. And that, we've seen that, we've seen that in the Cache Fire, we've seen that on the multiple fires we had. the multiple fires we had in the Riviers and Mount Conocdy this summer, the responses are different, and so are the responses from the community. And those need to be looked at to make sure that this is a relevant document that is not just a moment in time that shows proactive work. And so you've got to have that layering. If you want this to be one layer, that says one thing, but if you want to look at the communities that live here and the work that's being done, then we're going to need multiple layers here to take a true assessment of what's actually happening and what's going to happen and what's planned, what are the projects that are planned, and where is that commitment and accountability going forward? So, you know, data is critical, but so is looking at the adaptability and the pro, and our community's working proactively.
Just briefly, another addition that was added to RCRC's policies that will be implemented from here forward and they'll be advocating for in regards to legislation is in the tribal section of the policies, they've added essential services coordination, which states that RCRC supports cooperation and collaboration between counties and tribal entities regarding essential public services within tribal lands, including firefighting, public safety and emergency medical services. RCRC supports the use of MOU's agreements and mutual aid as mechanisms to establish coordinated essential services. So I don't know if that was in tandem with what was mentioned before, but I just wanted to highlight that as well, so.
Chair, are we okay if we just make sure no one in the audience has a comment now as well? As we're going to call the public comment period. Sure.
It's been brought up by everybody in this room about the algorithm, looking at, looking at this at smaller, a smaller snapshot, if you will. The technology exists. I can go online and almost look in my neighbors' windows based on just a drive-by technology using Google and the other online mapping programs. I would really like to see Cal Fire go back and use smaller parcels, subdivide the zones, look at the effects that we are doing with defensible space, that we are doing with home hardening, and take that into account when building out these maps, that these are not, you know, our zones are overly broad, and we can narrow it down, we have the technology, it exists, to go to the parcel level and look at this. And I would really like to see Cal Fire not only look at the algorithms, but actually drill down and get, subdivide those zones even smaller, take into effect what we are doing for defensible space, what Cal Fire is driving for defensible space and home hardening, and take that into account, because these maps are coming out and having the opposite effect, because our constituents are going, why am I paying this much in insurance when I can't build back here? Why am I paying, why am I spending all this money on defensible space, all this money on home hardening, when I can't, when I really see no benefit from it, because the state's taking my knees out from underneath me and forcing me to pay higher insurance rates? And we can all sit there and the state can say, you can't use these to, for your insurance modifiers. We absolutely know that's taking place, there's no penalty on the insurance companies, because the insurance company's going to say, no, we send out our own adjusters. We create our own maps. It's, the state has to be more aggressive and more helpful for its constituents. We're not asking the state to come in and do the work for us, we're asking for the state to make our work easier and to make it beneficial, because you are hurting, I know you're hurting my district and you're hurting my constituents because, with these maps, and as they continue to evolve, because they are overly broad. And as you've heard in this room, we have Fire Safe Councils, we have Risk Reduction Authorities, we have fire districts that are working very hard to promote home hardening and defensible space. And I'm going to go back to home hardening and home hardening and home hardening over and over and over again. We don't need to denude our landscape, we definitely need to modify it, but there's a better way to this, and Cal Fire needs to take these maps and go back and subdivide, drill down, and take into account all the hard work, all the money that's been spent through state grants, federal grants, local community organizations, and even on individual properties to benefit us, not to have it taken away from us, because an overly broad map that an insurance company is just going to say, we'll see you later. Thank you.
Chief Reitz, did you give your name?
I'm sorry, I can't. If I did. I'm Patrick Reitz, I am the fire chief for the Lakeport Fire Protection District here in Lake County. Thank you.
I just, can I follow up with a comment after his? Thank you. So as it, you know, as the chief was mentioning, home hardening, we have entire communities that have been rebuilt to the most current standards, and we have to have that reflected here. In the middle of this giant red blob that is most of the Cobb and Anderson Springs community, we have homes that are entirely built after 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. Those are all with the current standards and home hardening and defensible space, and there's not any recognition of that in these maps.
Yes, just very quickly again, Supervisor Green, I'm going to part ways with the speakers and my colleagues on the algorithm, on the request that we start analyzing fire risk in these maps as opposed to fire hazard. The fire hazard is the thing on the map that creates the incentive to start hardening your homes and stuff like that. I don't hear anybody attacking the science that drives the hazard assessment, and we have lived through so many wildfires in this county in the last several years. We've seen the wall of flames. We haven't seen just garden variety wildfires, we've seen catastrophic wildfires that we have never seen the scale of before. So I don't know that it is helpful in any way to say, oh, we need credit for vegging out a brush around my home, we get credit for a home hardening. When the Riviera burns, and not if it burns, but when it burns, it's going to be catastrophic, people are going to lose their lives. And we've seen this movie before, Paradise. One of my first jobs out of college was in Paradise. They talked about it 30, 40 years ago, boy, when this place burns, it's going to be bad. How much home hardening happened around there? How many lives were saved by all the home activities? When it comes to insurance and concerns on that, absolutely, we're talking to the wrong people. We need to talk to the insurance commissioner, the governor, whatever. It's not Cal Fire. We're not going to game the hazard maps so that we can get a break on our insurance. Rather, we should accept what the hazard map says, basically the entire county, given the right climate conditions, can burn. What are we supposed to do about that? The discussions we have come after the assessment of the hazard. So I believe the assessment of the hazard in the revised maps is dead-on correct. If we want to talk about the other things that have been addressed here in other venues and in other mapping tools, that's certainly appropriate, we can talk about it, but the hazard assessment proposed in this mapping is absolutely spot-on correct. Thank you.
I just have one more thing to add. Thanks. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Supervisor Green, but this is just one aspect that we're looking at. We have, we have a holistic view of our communities and what needs to happen. But what I, what I also don't quite understand is what is the benefit? Or is there a benefit? Are there going to be more resources to these areas? Are there going to be more strategic pre-positioning? Is there any benefit to having these maps as far as strategies that will change coming from Cal Fire and state response?
See no more comments, I'm going to call the public hearing to close, and then we'll go to the last agenda item, which is question and answer. Just want to make sure there's no more comments that want to go on record, as far as oral or verbal.
Thank you for attending today's public hearing. As a reminder, once the public hearing is officially closed, oral comments on the regulation will no longer be accepted today. However, the public has until February 3rd, 2023, to submit their written comments, and the process for doing that is located on the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking Action Document. A copy of the Notice of Proposed Rulemaking Action Document is available for you today. In addition, further information about the Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map, phone number, link to the public website, information email address, and other relevant informational aids are available in the room, should you like to take some copies home with you. The audience will also have an opportunity to ask questions during the informal breakout session with any of the Cal Fire staff. Again, thank you for attending today's public hearing, and I formally adjoint this public hearing, and it's 10:19 a.m. Thank you. If I can, I can just give a quick presentation and kind of remind you guys about the process and everything else if you want to do a public comment. So, real quickly, the statistics, and this is some of the handouts in back of the room, and whether this is good or bad, what's proposed is 92.8% of the SRA in Lake County will be considered very high. So about 400,000 acres of state responsibility in Lake County, roughly 93% of that will be very high. If you look at other counties throughout the state, I think there's about two or three that have a higher percentage of SRA going to very high or will be in very high, so that gives you some perspective across the state. And then just as a kind of explanation, state responsibility areas where Cal Fire has jurisdiction for, mainly for suppression, you have the Mendez International Forest in Lake County, you have some BLM lands, some BIA lands, those are all technically federal, so they are not going to get modeled as part of this. However, in cities, incorporated cities, or portions of the county outside of SRA and outside of a city limit that are called local responsibility area, those maps are going to be released to the county and the cities. So you'll get, maybe in six months, maybe as short as three months, but I think it's going to be about six months, the local agencies are going to get notified that the state, Office of State Fire Marshal, Cal Fire, it's more or less one and the same. We modeled your local responsibility area in the city or in an incorporated county that's not SRA, state responsibility area, sorry for all the acronyms, and this is what it is. This was also done back in 2008, I was involved back then as well. I do not believe there was any what's called very high local responsibility in Lake County going back to 2008. Some of the cities and the counties could have done what's called the wooie zone, but this all pertains to the building code, not about insurance necessarily. So that's the process, this is just where Cal Fire has jurisdiction, you won't see any federal lands modeled or any data coming out on that, but you will at some point have local responsibility, which is inside cities and unincorporated Lake County, that'll get modeled at some point, and that'll come back, and I'd love to, you know, help you guys with that process too, if needed. So what we're doing right now, we're going through 45-day public comment on state responsibility area classification, you know, how this state responsibility area is put into one of three zones. Some of the building codes really just, whether you're in SRA or not, it doesn't matter necessarily what zone you're in, but for hazard disclosure, Assembly Bill 38 with defensible space inspections, that's some of the stuff that this stuff triggers. So just as a reminder, and then some of the board's comments, and I'll offer, if you guys want to do any type of form, whether online, in person, and we also have Chief Duncan here who's the lead Cal Fire official for Lake County, I'm willing to do whatever to get you guys the information, so you have, you know, you have it. We're just under the gun a little bit here, February 3rd, next Friday is the deadline for public comment, but absolutely, the board, the county, I think there's at least two other counties in the Sonoma and Napa unit that are providing to do public comment. I think most of you guys are all notified via CSAC too as well, and maybe the rural counties. So there's other things I think going on, I'm not really privy to that and I shouldn't be, but that's all part of that public comment period. So if you do want to get a public comment in, just make sure you get in on my next Friday, or put somebody on notice that you guys are planning to do a comment. I'd hate you guys to get shut off by a deadline, if that makes sense. Any information you guys need, the slider map, finding stuff, I got the proposed map in back, I'll help you guys with any of that if you need to as well.
So our next board meeting is after the deadline, and so we can give notice that we're going to be sending our comment in late?
I would, I would, I mean, I can't, I don't know officially how this is all going to work, but I would say you should probably, you know, let somebody know.
Okay. Susan?
I don't know if on this agenda.
I've already added it to the 31st, it'll be the last item on that day.
Oh, right, the 31st. A workshop special meeting? It's a special item for the workshop? Okay, great.
And just as a reminder, anything we're talking about now is not officially public comment or on the record, that's closed. So anything we talk about now, you need to follow up in writing, or hand deliver, or email, and that's the information here. So I just want to make sure you guys have that opportunity to get those comments in. We're taking all this stuff with us today, the recordings and everything. If you guys have written comments to turn in, we did have a recommended form in the back of the room, but you don't have to use this. There is Cal Fire Sacramento staff here that'll take it right back to Cal Fire Sacramento to get it submitted. Also can do member, in-person, email, or mail it in as well. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. That's kind of the end of my presentation, unless there's questions from the board, but thank you very much.
Johanna, I emailed you the link with the slider, can we put that up on the screen so the public can see?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, I do have a question for you. So I mentioned it's been since 2008, you've mentioned that it's been since 2008. Is there any plans to make this happen more often, or are we stuck with this map for another 14 years potentially?
So you're correct, the last maps were done in 2008, end of 2007. The plan is every five years for Cal Fire to update. How this momentum got going is it was a legislative action that directed Cal Fire to do it. So I believe the Public Resources Code, that's a state law, says every five years, but obviously Cal Fire, been 14 since the last update, and this was driven by, hey, in light of all the recent bad fires the last five years, you know, building construction, defensible spaces, where it's at, make sure the hazard's known to folks so they can mitigate that risk. Thank you.
Point about homes built after the, all the, you know, fires, including 2015 on, they're all built to Chapter 7A, which still currently is the building code standard.
Right. Yeah, so this map has the slider, and Johanna, if you, this is the current map on the, or the proposed map on the left, the previous map, the old map is on the right, and so you can slide back and forth?
Want to zoom in, maybe zoom in to clear it up, and we can look at maybe the Riviera or?
Yeah, that's a good spot right there.
So on this map, yellow, there's three classifications for safety responsibility. Yellow's moderate, the orange is very high, and you can see the more non-transparent orange there, and then red is very high. So what you're seeing, and if we look at the statistics, about 30% of the yellow, 30% of moderate, got upgraded to high and very high, majority of that went to a very high. And remember, the science is why homes burn is sustained heat, just heat on the side of your house eventually will catch it on fire, or embers find an opening to get into your house. So this is, you know, the warmer weather, the longer summers, windy conditions, the vegetation type, timber brush producing embers and heat, how that's now being modeled.
Oh, you have to come up to the microphone, please?
Just a, well, it's broken up by county on the sheet in the back. I think in Lake County, none of it went the other way.
Well, yeah, I was, I'm asking statewide how much went the other way. I mean, we've burned tremendous acreage, and taken some of the heat out of some of these potential fires, because the heavy fuel loading is now somewhat less, and now we're dealing with flashier, brushier fuel models. So I would be curious, you know, you've referenced what's gone the bad way, but what's going the good way? Is there, is there any significant decrease from very high to higher, high to moderate?
So I don't have at the statewide level all the percentages, but if you look at by county, Del Norte had a drop of 14.7%, I think Imperial County had a drop of 17.6%. I think also Humboldt. I don't have it like in front of me, but I can get it for you.
It's more of a rhetorical question, but.
Yeah, so here's the thing about how these vegetations look like, so let's just say a fire happens and a forest gets converted to grass or totally burned, it's still modeled as what it could be in 50 to years, so it's still modeled as a forest. And so that's the problem with defensible space, fuel breaks, all that good risk reduction, still get modeled as if it's not there.
Well, and that's what they said on the video, is that, first of all, that, that they are averaging the zone, so, you know, that, if, you know, 51% of the zone, that's going to be averaged up to the other direction.
to the other direction. So there, there to me is a problem with some of the modeling and the fact that you're saying, well, in 50 years, it's going to look like this. Well, given the fire history in California, these areas are burning every three to seven to 10 years, not every 50 years as the discussion we're having at this point in time. So I think the modeling is a bit flawed if we're going to be looking at it that way. And I understand I'm outside of the public comment period, but this goes back to my original comments during the public comment period and, and I would continue to echo and ask you to go back to the state and go, wait a second, why are we looking at a 50-year model when we should be looking at a 10-year model? Because we all know, we go back to the same areas that have burned time and time again with our teams. Thanks.
Yeah, that's just a good reminder, this is all off, you know, I don't want to say off the records as part of a board supervisor meeting, but this is not going to get fed back to CAL FIRE unless you guys put this in writing. Um, you know, I can't receive, you know, public comment like that, just so you guys know. So all good discussion. And one of the questions that got asked in another hearing was, why can't we do like an informational session before the official public hearing? And, and the answer is, you know, I could intimidate somebody, I could give a bad answer to somebody, the, the thought being is you come and just give a public, your public comment based on what you know. And so that's why the question and answer session on the agenda here is, is after the official public hearing. But I understand that, you know, finding information on our website is not always the best because it's a statewide website. Understanding all these terms can be confusing, uh, you know, interpreting that map there as well, you know? So that's what I'm saying, if, if you want help or we do something with a community meeting, I'm, I'm all about helping out. There is stuff on the insurance side, like the Firewise USA, there is the Board of Forestry last year did the California Risk Reduction Community List, which is through the California Board of Forestry. There's now an insurance certification you can get on a house. So there's all these other risk reduction certification processes that are, I think, somewhat for, trying to encourage or, I don't want to say force, but, um, make it more appealing for insurance companies to provide you insurance, you know, rates, how much you pay is another, another concern. Um, and then as somebody mentioned, the elected insurance official is, is, you know, different than the Board of Forestry, different than CAL FIRE as a department of the state.
Is there any other public comment? We can open it up to the Zoom room this time? Is there anyone in Zoom that has a public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any, um, questions or comments on this issue before we close it out? I just, I have the question about what are the benefits that will come with this and is this more resources, um, more targeted programs? Do you have any sense on what we can expect on the positive side from this type of mapping?
So the only positive thing and considered, you know, positive or not, is the current CAL FIRE grants that are open called the Fire Prevention Grants, which are due March 10th. I haven't checked the form in the last week or two, but it does ask how, what percentage of your project area is in a very high, what's your, what is your fire hazard severity class? Um, and that, so that's a question, that's a question and it's not 100% weighted, I don't know exactly what the selection is or that, what the committee uses to select it, but that is one benefit is you can articulate, you have a higher hazard now for potential, for going after grants. Is CAL FIRE going to get more resources? Is more resources like firefighters going to be available to local agents such as Lakeport? There's no, no tie to that. So one of the ways this has been explained to me, it's like a hundred year flood plane, you either live in a flood plain here or you don't. And if you live in a flood plain is, uh, you know, what's that, probably, you know, what, how many years is a one in a hundred year flood, one in 30 year flood, it's kind of that type of ranking. So then you can put levees up, you can, you know, elevate houses, it's that mitigate risk mitigation. So there's really no tie to the response stuff, um, but there is a part of it in the CAL FIRE grants. So there's the CAL FIRE Fire Prevention Grants, there eventually be the Forest Health Grants, uh, there's also the Workforce Development Grants, um, you know, that CAL FIRE offers too.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to share with you some of the troubles that I've had lately in trying to mitigate fires to the east of the city of Clear Lake. And this is where you have levels of bureaucracy that kind of compete against each other. Uh, the Cache Creek Wilderness touches the city of Clear Lake and then there's the National Monument as well. Uh, we were able to do some mitigation, um, right on the border through some county land and through some private land, uh, but touching the Cache Creek Wilderness right now has been an ultimate barrier saying, we have never done this before, we have never mitigated fires, we don't know how to do that, basically scared of liability. But these maps show us where the danger is and when we know where it is and we're trying to do something about it, we're being prevented from doing some of the work. And so, uh, I, I hope that in the future, when presented with these updates and maps, that they are made to benefit the purpose of mitigating, not just for us to see that there is red right there, because, um, that, that, that part is very frustrating for me on my end is we're doing everything we can to have the conversations to protect and yet there's barriers that exist even though we see it on the map that says there's a danger zone right there. And so, uh, I, I hope we can find ways to, uh, elevate the, um, urgency of getting mitigation done rather than being stuck with the rules that we've created. Um, protecting is, is good, we need to go through a, an environmental process before we do any of those things, uh, but at the same time, the longer we wait, the more we're going to have another rocky fire or another, uh, valley fire and, and that part does not please me at all. So, uh, just wanted to express that those are some of the hurdles that we have in front of us. Um, and while the map exacerbates the problem in the sense that it's become more red, uh, more extreme fire threat, it doesn't provide any assistance for us at this moment in time to overcome the barriers we currently have.
And I appreciate that comment. So Paul Duncan is here, you know, Lake County Lead CAL FIRE Official, also I think many of you are familiar with Mike Wink, he just promoted to what's called the Pre-Fire Division Chief, so this is kind of his thing now. Um, so if we want to talk offline, Mike, I, you know, Paul, about what, what are the options out there? And there is some stuff with the federal agencies, um, that we could look into. Um, you know, we talk a lot of it about grants, but there's also, and I'm going to maybe not know the best term for this, but the FEMA grants, hazard mitigation grants, that might be a possibility too. Um, I'm involved in another county that, that's been getting or potentially going to get millions of dollars at the federal level for mitigation. So can that be extended there as a possibility between the city, the state, and also the federal agency there? It might be a possibility. There is dozer lines out there on those ridges and, you know, just putting a project together, going through the process, but, um, and when you, that just brings up another thing, you know, when you look at these maps coming down for local responsibility, that might be an example you're going to see not very high in that city. I don't know how, how much it'll be, but I would not be surprised if there's some very high there too now in local responsibility.
Right. And we've walked the ridge with Chief Duncan and Chief Wink, uh, so they're very well aware of the project, but I will definitely continue to reach out and see if there's ways to break down the obstacles.
I'm up here and talking to the mic, Paul.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
Just, just very quickly, is the, uh, fire hazard designation, uh, considered at all when prescribed burns are proposed? Like is it harder to do prescribed burning in a very high-risk area versus a moderate?
No, not really. It's, I got, you know, to be truthful, you know, we got to fill it out that it's in a very high or high or whatever it might be, but there's a whole separate checklist, um, that's a complexity rating, um, then more to deal with, you know, are we going to damage the watershed, how close are we to homes, you know?
So it's project specific, site specific? Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming today. It's not obviously the best news that we want to, to see and hear, but, um, having the community give their input is critical. So everyone that's listening online and in the chambers today, please submit your comments by February 3rd. We will be submitting our comments, um, from the board. Uh, and then we just continue to work in collaboration with all of our partners here in CAL FIRE and our local response, um, to continue to protect our community. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.